Please all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the government of Washington on a mission underground in the physical.
Craig, please let the record show we had an executive session on a personnel matter earlier. Thank you. As every meeting now, our meetings are video recorded. So sorry, Woody's aware of that. First up is the citizen report tool from McMahon. I believe we have a presentation.
Hello, my name's Amber and then I have Eric with me also. We are from Tracer. And I'm just going to give you guys a brief overview of it's called the Citizen Reporter, and it'll benefit the residents and the township. I'm going to share my screen. Okay, so this is Citizen Reporter is an application that allows residents to submit concerns or issues that they see within the township. The reporter is designed for smartphones, tablets, and desktop computers. So the benefit of being able to submit something, say if you're walking in the park or outside, you can do it right on your phone. The Citizen Reporter shows one or more maps that can be used to report a specific concern. The Citizen Reporter will be accessible through the township's website once it goes live, and it will bring you to the screen that you see right here. Opening screen, it might ask you for your location, which is helpful if you are outside because it can go to your exact location and automatically fill in. This main pop-up here gives you a brief overview of the township's process for when a concern comes into the system for them. Has some information about other resources to possibly go to instead. So once you close that, if you see on the map here, there are eight different categories that could be chosen from, and it's whatever best fits your concern. So as an example, if I wanted to report a concern about tall grass, I would go to this code violation map here. And it just shows your township boundary within it. So I actually can't click anything outside of the boundary. It has to be within this shape here. I'll submit a report. And then you would just fill out the form. It's only be six fields. So you do your date, and then here is your nature of request. So there are multiple different options, and depending on which map you choose, there will be different values that you can choose from. So I'll select tall grass, write a description for it. Fill out my name. And these fields are required, but when they are submitted, no one else can see them. So it's not open to the public or anything like that. If you are in the field, you can upload an attachment, so it'll automatically open your camera. Or if you're at home, you can take a picture, and then it'll go to your file explorer, and you can upload it that way. And then for your location, if you click this here, it'll zoom you to your location. I'm not going to do that because I do not live in Lower Quinett. But I can just zoom in onto the map. And then I can just click, and it'll automatically fill in the address for me here. So then all I have to do is hit report it. It'll say, thank you, your report has been submitted. And then if you need to submit another one, you can just go back to the front, and then you have your whole list to get. It's pretty easy to use, and depending on which map you click, you might have a message to help with some extra information. So if I zoom in, this one is for health concerns pertaining to mosquitoes. For public works, we have roadways. But you can see the local roadways are highlighted, and then there is different information for pendot, snowstorms, and sewer billing. So it just depends on which map you click for which pop-up you will see here. And it gives you the information of phone numbers to call, which is really nice. The overall Citizen Reporter is very user-friendly, and it gives the residents a quick and easy way to submit their concerns. Do you have anything to add, Eric?
Um, no, thanks, Amber. That was good. I think all that I would add was would be that within a few seconds of a resident submitting that request, it comes into Tracer, which is the system that the township uses internally to run their permitting, and they also can do these, they can address these work orders out of it. So it's basically an internal work order system that they can use to basically handle the request according to their internal process. So it automatically just gets transitions right into there into the software that they're used to using for other workflows.
Yep.
Do you want to have any questions?
Yeah, I'd like to make your recommendation. I want to make sure that this isn't used for any emergency, any 911 actions, because I can see somebody saying, oh, I know how to report something. Click on this and then think help's going to arrive right away. So I'm not sure how you want to accomplish that. Because you got to put a message out there that you're not going to get help with this.
So on the welcome screen, this pop-up here says that this is an emergency, please call 911.
Well, I'm sorry, but I couldn't read that. So it's, you know, we need a bigger screen, I think, for the old supervisors. So, you know, I want to make sure that we don't do that. Also, a message might banner might be appropriate in some fashion when they're when when they're ready to submit the report, just so they get another reminder. Just a thought. I'm not saying it's a requirement, but I want to make sure that nothing 911 comes through this system at all.
Understood. Yeah, we do have the ability to make that text, the Amber head up there a little bigger and like, you know, bold and red to make sure that you emphasize, hey, this is not meant for emergency purposes. And we could also put something on that, that side panel where she was entering the fields of information as a kind of like a second reminder, hey, just so you know, this is not for emergency, emergency type issues. But yeah, we could certainly emphasize that more.
Okay.
Could you explain how this is going to be introduced to the residents of Lower Quinett? And where do they find it on the website and so forth? Because this is all going to be new. And the report, does it go right to the department that it's trying to address or reach?
So I'm going to leave how it gets to your residents to Jamie, I believe, but for when it comes into the system, it's sent to the general mailbox, and then it will be assigned to the appropriate department to handle and fix whatever's wrong and complete the work order.
How do the residents know about this?
Well, we're going to push this out through our e-newsletter, our township newsletter. We'll have information available on our website and through our social media and, you know, provide the information on this new program. And just to get the word out in any other way that we can, we'll also, you know, if anybody has a question and they want to discuss how to use it, you know, they can call the township, we can talk to them about it. And then as far as notification, this will go directly into Tracer, and we'll assign it. But when somebody submits it, we'll get an automatic notification that something's been submitted. So it's not, we're not going into Tracer to check if anything was in there. We'll get notified that something's been in there, been entered in there.
Jamie, how did you and Craig find this? Is there other municipalities using it?
Yes, Tracer has a couple of different customers. This came out in building and zoning when we were uploading the comp plan into Tracer, and this was discussed. Danielle and Mark had suggested that this might be a tool worth considering. So we had funding left in that, in that project. So we used the remaining funds to develop this tool so we could add it to our website and make it available to the residents.
Thank you.
What is the budget for this?
The budget, it was part of, but a budget funds that were allocated for the comp plan update into Tracer, the old comp plan into Tracer. So I think this, we had about, I think, like 7,500 left, and this was right around that.
Okay, but this is the first I'm hearing about it. So this was discussed in a subcommittee meeting?
Yeah, this was discussed at building and zoning.
Okay, and so the building and zoning subcommittee is urging us, I guess, to move forward with this? What is the situation?
So we've already, can you hear me?
Yeah.
So we've already approved it. So it was part of Tracer was doing a GIS system where we were tracking various things within the township. And we were also uploading a comprehensive plan at the suggestion of supervisor.
Right.
We had monies left over, and this was an opportunity for us to be able to develop this system similar to what's, I know in Philadelphia, it's called 311. Other municipalities, apparently within Montgomery County are using it, and they have assisted in developing it. So it's very similar to a 311 system, if you know about that.
Yeah.
We've already paid for it. It's already done.
Okay, so is this a yearly cost to the township after we institute this?
As far as maintaining it?
Yeah.
I know the development was.
Yeah, we already had, we already pay a yearly subscription for Tracer. So this is part of that.
Okay, thank you. That seems like a good system, very user-friendly, and I think residents will really appreciate.
Yeah.
So two things, right? So you're going to drop the message into a mailbox? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. So when it sinks into Tracer, it's newly created, so it will send an email to the general mailbox stating like, oh, this work order has been created, and you can click on the link in it, and it'll automatically take you to that work order in Tracer.
Yeah, so a group mailbox is, they're fine, but they're, you know, they're a good solution when you're first starting out. And, you know, there's nothing wrong with them. The only thing with group mailboxes is that somebody has to monitor them, and then the person has to, who's monitoring, has to allocate or execute a workflow. So it gets to the right person who does parks or who does roads and so forth. So in the future, I would hope that we could direct that more closely to the end targeted user, and that we wouldn't have the maintenance allocated, although initially you would want to, because you would want to know how big the issues are and where they're emanating from. So so you can execute a workflow, and you could also send a text. So pretty much all the department heads now have phones, is that right? I think they have Apple devices. Yeah, so then you could send them a text when a when a message came in that was more 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 appropriate for whatever the complaint or the issue was. So it gets to the right person. Have you have you done that at all yet?
We do, sorry, we do have the ability to send each of those items. If you still see on your screen the different items down the right side of Amber's screen, each of those can be routed to any number of individuals or groups of people. So you can have, you know, a default list of people that get notified for each, you could have the list to be different for each of those types of issues. And they'll be notified. Right now, our active notification is email. We are looking into doing texts, but right now it's just emails. And then they also have a passive notification. If it's assigned to them when they come into Tracer to manage it into their interface, which is different from this, they can go right to, we have a way to just show them the stuff that they've been assigned to, so they can click right into what they want to see. So active with a notification to their inbox, and then a passive way to find it in Tracer.
Yeah, and the other thing I would want to do is have an administration button. So in other words, a supervisor can get a request from someone, like I got requests for a speed trailer at the Gwinnett Valley Post Office, right? So so when I was at the post office, I didn't have to have anything that I could send a message to Paul or anybody else to. But when I got back, of course, I completely forgot because I was on to other things. But if my phone, is this going to be app-enabled? Or is this strictly email?
It, I'm sorry, which which component?
Well, no, all of this. So I want to, I would like it on an app, so I can download it to my phone. Is that how I'm going to do it? Or is this strictly an email tool?
It runs actually through the browser. Amber is running in her browser here. But if you open this on your phone, it'll run the same way. Because your phone is small, you either get the panel of choices or the map, but it seamlessly switches back and forth between the two. So you have the same functionality you see here on the screen. It's just, just gets reformatted as your screen shrinks. There's nothing to install on your phone in order to run it.
Yeah, so it's not an app, is what you're saying. It runs in the browser. Well, I mean, that's a good start, right? That's a very good start. You got to start somewhere. But we would want to, at some point, think about turning this into an app to make life a little bit easier. But that's, you know, that's a conversation for for another time. But I'd also like a the administration button on it. So the administration button would be exactly what I just described, a way for me to route or any supervisors to route requests to the department heads. So, you know, if something comes up, and we don't have our phones with us, or we don't have our rather our emails with us, or or whatever, I can just click on the app or click on the, open the browser, click on a button here, and send a route a message to whoever I think the individual is or group mailbox, I suppose, to start out with. So it should be, there should be a way to do that. This really is an issue tracker. So the issue tracker, what kind of reporting are going to be on the back end of this?
We can report on this however you want to. We have a number of like existing reports that'll summarize them by status and by by type and things like that. But if you have any reporting requirements outside of that, we can, we can accommodate those as well.
Yeah. And how about dispositions? So in other words, in the report, I would want to know if there's a pothole, for example, and I, if somebody sends a picture of a pothole at, I don't know, Tennis and Arbor, you know, I'd like to know if that was actually fixed. So I have to have a way to know that the tracker was, we have a tracker issue that's open. I would want some, I would want to be able to know who's assigned to it and what happened to it. So that's, that's a little bit more than a reporting tool.
Well, that information's all available in Tracer. Tracer is a pretty robust tracking. It's a work order management system. So it has, you'll be able to see who's touched it, well, what the status is, what's going on. We established like a chain of events that happens in order to address the issue. That's not present in this this interface that Amber has up. This is the customer or the, excuse me, the resident facing piece of it to take in the requests. Once they come into Tracer, which is our other interface, there's, there's full functionality to track things and see who did what when.
That's good, but the supervisors don't usually have access to the administration tools. It's just something to consider, right? So there's more work to do here. I'm saying this is, this is fine, and I'm going to ask another question. How come it took you so long? You guys have done a great job. You took us from nothing about five years ago or so to, you know, we had automated was the fax machines and in the financial software package. And you've taken us a long way. There's still a lot of work to be done. But you guys have done a great job. And I think the issue tracker here, is that the, what is the name of this thing? We need to abbreviate. We need a three-letter word here. So we can just refer to it as the ICS or whatever we want to call it. So it has to have a naming, naming rights, Jamie. Come up with naming rights. Yeah, it's too long. LG, LGCR or something. I think it's, yeah, you need three letters. So I think this is, I think this is excellent. Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the supervisors? Okay, any questions from members of the public?
There is a message in the chat window. It's from Kathy Pagano, and it says, would this include reporting traffic speed violation violators? We would choose code violation. And they, the application that we're setting up is we're not, we don't have a police category in here at all, because that's what we want to avoid. We don't want anybody reporting that.
So Kathy, the answer is no. Is there any more questions online, Jane?
I do not see any.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is receipt of the minutes for November the 9th. Supervisors had a chance to take a look, and if so, can I have a motion? Have a second?
Second.
Although as a favor, say aye. Next up, receipt of the dated budget report and balance sheet for August 2021. Now, I really haven't had an opportunity to look at this, Craig. So I think I want to table this. Is there, is there any objections to from the supervisors to table? No, okay, all right. So we'll table this. Next up is Resolution 21-776 Johns Lane Preliminary and Final Subdivision Approval. Okay, Kristen Pianzi, I think you're up.
Evening. I see you, Chris Pianzi of Amber Gruden, Low and High School. Welcome. And we are here to please, from the last time we were here, where we discussed the waivers and the approval, I have executed a resolution that the solicitor and I have come back and forth with. The conditions of that resolution are acceptable to us. We cover all of these, all the costs, all the issues that we discussed, and we ask people favorably on it and break the season.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stein, Neil, you've gotten all the paperwork, and both of you have agreed to the the language and so forth.
Yes, and it's been signed by Mr. Mrs. B. U.
Okay, all right. Are there any questions from the supervisors?
Yes, I have a couple of comments. So I do appreciate that you've been through the process that's, you know, necessary to get to this point. As a member of the Board of Supervisors who is not on one of the other subcommittees, last week was my first opportunity to review the list of waivers that you're pursuing. And so I had some time to think about it this week. And I really have an objection to two of the waivers that are being requested. And one is the the waiver of the full tree replacement cost. So I think that the township had recommended a higher dollar amount there. And I'm, I'd like to hear a justification for the figure that you chose. Oh, you don't want to, okay. So the second issue is the waiver of the requirement to provide a pedestrian trail and sidewalks. I am, I'm okay with that waiver. But what I would like, if you are, you know, if the township provides that, that we create a riparian area along the Rose Creek on either side of the creek. And that would, it would be something like a a set aside and protected in, I guess, perpetuity. I understand our ordinances require 25 feet, but I would like to increase that to 100 feet. And this would help, I think, a little bit more, give a little bit more mitigation to cutting down trees and potentially increasing the sedimentation rate in the creek. This is a major tributary of the Wissahickon. And as people are aware, currently, we're trying to negotiate ways to reduce sediments in the Wissahickon Creek.
Okay, relative to the the fee in lieu of trees, what we've done is come up with a voluntary contribution because to pay for a waiver is something that your solicitor might suggest that we not state in this meeting room. So what we've done is a voluntary contribution of $150,000. It's impossible for us to plant the trees on this site. So those with trees on their property have reduced development opportunities versus those who have no trees. So they would live, we would literally have to take trees down in order to replace the trees and plant them on the property. As far as the riparian protection that you're looking for, I'm going to ask Tim, our engineer, to speak on that issue.
Thank you. Yeah, we certainly acknowledge the environmental importance.
Excuse me, could you introduce yourselves?
Oh, I'm sorry, folks. Good evening. My name is Tim Woodrow. I'm a civil engineer and responsible for the design of the project.
Thank you.
Again, we have, I think, recognized the environmental importance of the property and have done, I think, a pretty good job of avoiding any kind of adverse impacts on those riparian corridor areas we're talking about. We also have a flood plain that is defined along the Rose Valley Creek Tributary along Tennis Avenue. And again, had done our best job of protecting all of that. Again, we spoke to the planning commission about the Hughes's commitment to the historic significance of the property to a gentler approach to subdivision. I think Jamie has put up a plan, you know, if I were representing Toll Brothers tonight, I am sure I'd be in with a plan that would show 12 lots that would look very similar to what's on the screen. The Hughes's have done, I think, a good job of balancing the need for revenue from their years of storage chip on the land against trying to preserve some of those important things. And so I think we have done a pretty good job with that riparian buffer protection. The plan clearly shows those areas, those buffers, the tree preservation. And as a part of the record plan, we'll stand in perpetuity against disturbance of those areas. To increase that any more than than we have, that 100-foot setback as you propose, would really sterilize the property. We couldn't build at all. And I don't think that would be fair compromise to what we're proposing this evening.
I failed to see why 100 feet is going to impact the building lots that you have.
Well, if I measure 100 feet from that stream, you can see there's a dash line that is adjacent to the tributary of the Rose Valley Creek. And that's a 25-foot, oh, thank you, Kristen. So this line is a 25-foot buffer that is established by your zoning code. If I were to go four times that amount, it would be all the way out here, and we really consume those two lots out back. And in a similar fashion, this line is our flood plain line. And if I were to increase that 100 feet, it would really take out, you know, the vast majority of that development. So again, sterilizing the property with a 100-foot riparian corridor setback.
Anything else as we can?
Is there any more questions from the supervisors?
I'm not quite sure that we're finished with this discussion. So what would be your proposal then, instead of 100 feet?
My proposal is to
Acknowledge the responsibilities that your ordinance supposes. And my proposal would be to stick with the plan as presented.
So I, I can appreciate that the township has the 25 foot, and you have it marked on the map. But I have no guarantee that beyond that 25 feet, which I don't consider to be really very meaningful, that there's going to be care taken of the property to prevent sedimentation into the creek or other, you know, issues with the ecology of the area.
So yes, I mean, you actually do have protections. If your concern is the sediment load in the creek. In conjunction with this plan, there is a post-construction stormwater management plan that gets recorded against the property pursuant to our pursuant to our NPDES permit that will, will need to secure from DEP. And this NPDES permit is, is very tedious and, and kind of represents the latest thinking in stormwater management calculation, design, technology. It deals with not only rate control, but also water quality improvements and also volume reductions over what we might have done 10, 15 years ago in stormwater management design. That plan gets recorded against the property and then is enforced by not only DEP, but by the township. So anybody who would take and modify or fail to maintain the stormwater BMPs as recorded and, and as approved through this permit will be subject to penalty and replacement and, you know, restoration. So you do actually have some pretty decent protections today that maybe 10, 15 years ago you would not have had.
And Mr. Woodrow, for the benefit of everybody, could you explain what a best management practice is, BMPs, in this context?
So, you know, when we talk about development through, through time, you know, certainly after the Second World War, you know, vets come home and, and we built Levittown. We did a lot of development in the 50s, 60s, 70s that dealt absolutely did not deal with stormwater runoff. And so in the intervening decades, we have grown in our knowledge and our technology and how we deal with stormwater runoff. And so the detention basins we built in the 90s look nothing like the detention basins we're building today. And so about 2005, DEP, through the urging of EPA, have triggered a whole new set of standards that we are all dealing with. And not, again, not only dealing with rate control, but also volume reduction and water quality improvements, trying to heal our impaired waterways. You guys are as aware as anybody about the Wissahican Creek TMDL, you know, the study that said the, the Wissahican Creek is impaired and we've got to do things to improve its quality. And through this TMDL program, the hope is that the health of the stream will be improved. Part of your obligation as a township is to adopt the latest in stormwater regulations in order to qualify for the right to operate your storm source system. So the lower winded township stormwater ordinances do represent the latest and greatest thinking that our industry kind of understands. And so again, I think you do have protections today against that stream sediment load by virtue of the current NPDES permit process. And I do think that the plan that we're presenting meets those goals.
Jim, can you comment on that?
I agree with, with what Tim's saying. The plan, absent of the waivers that they're requesting, meets all of your current ordinances. So I mean, the 25-foot wetland buffer is what's required. It's essentially an easement. It can't be touched without a conditional use approval from the Board of Supervisors. And the stormwater management BMPs will meet the township ordinance and the MPDS permit requirements.
Okay.
Is there any more questions, Tessie?
I guess my last question would be, do, so Neil, we spoke to another developer last week or our last, previous meeting. And we asked them to be, you know, take responsibility for stormwater issues going forward. Is it possible that we incorporate language into this proposal along those lines?
Yes, every applicant that receives a subdivision or land development approval has to sign a stormwater maintenance agreement that gets reported against the property. So they will be required to do that, just like every other applicant.
Okay. All right.
I, I might suggest too, I don't know if you'd be willing to do this, possibly a more robust disclosure in your homeowner documents about the environmentally sensitive nature of the property.
And I believe one of the conditions is that your office reviews those documents, so we can do that now.
Okay.
All right, no further questions then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tessie. Any more questions from the board? Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Please.
Good evening, everybody. Jason Edwards on behalf of Joanne Lesko.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Could you please use the microphone?
Can everyone hear me now? Thanks. Jason Edwards on behalf of Joanne Lesko. One thing I just wanted to point out is that this plan has been revised since the Planning Commission recently approved it. So I know on the agenda, it states preliminary and final approval. I would just ask that this go back to the Planning Commission before you all vote on the final approval. And then Joanne does have some things she would like to say as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. The, what has been revised to our knowledge is there was supposed to be a visual barrier. And I believe that was not in the original plans. It has now been placed in the plans between my client's house and this planned development.
I'm Joanne Lesko, lives at 765 Johns Lane. I'd just like to reiterate once again, not everything I spoke about last two weeks ago, but my concerns regarding the development. I don't have issues with it, but I ask for fair treatment by everyone surrounded by the development. The safety issues that we've talked about last two weeks ago, the answer to that is the three-way stop sign. Well, my driveway sits in the middle of the three-way stop sign. And you watch daily people going through Kennelworth. You watch daily people on the bend. You watch the ruts in my grass. You watch how people cannot make that bend at all. I have a true concern about that three-way stop sign. And is that really going to help the safety issues with eight to 10 more cars coming out of the driveway? I don't know. I'm not a traffic expert, but I do have visual observation of what happens on that bend. The next thing is, we do know that the historical impact study showed there was impact on my historical property. Once again, the barn sits 33 feet from the driveway. And it did say there was an impact. Granted, it wasn't tremendous, but there's an impact. When we left the Planning Commission meeting, they had passed the plan for preliminary on the condition that a visual barrier would be placed. And I do expect a buffer that would be more than a trivial three trees or three bushes or whatever. And something as a barrier that was discussed that would actually stop from seeing the construction activity and the vehicles and everything else. It's going to be a turmoil for many, many months as this project goes through. So I would certainly expect a little bit more where I see there's a buffer on the neighboring property and they're not truly affected by this. I don't see any buffer that prevents us from seeing construction vehicles and things like that. So I basically request to the board that you defer final approval of the plan until the Planning Commission actually acts on the plan. Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question? Just for clarification purposes, on the screen where it says the words Johns Lane, is that your property or the one directly to the right?
That's the barn.
So that's your barn?
That's the barn and that's my home.
So where it says Johns Lane, that's your home?
Yes.
And then to the right of that is your
That's the barn. That's 33 feet from the driveway as it sits today.
So what you're requesting is that from where the barn is to the, to the driveway, the private drive right now, you're asking for a physical barrier?
Yes.
And so those trees or bushes, I don't know what they are, to the right, that's not your property? Okay. And so your, your statement, and I just want to make sure for clarification purposes, was from the Planning Commission that they sent it to the Board of Supervisors under the condition that a visual barrier was created?
Yes.
Did you have discussions about that visual barrier or did you agree to the visual barrier?
It was Mr. Montaldo, if I pronounce his name correctly. I may be mispronouncing his name.
Melagrana? Is that what you're saying?
No, it's Montaldo. Mon, I don't know. Can someone help me?
Melagrana?
That's it. That's it. I'm sorry. That's the name. Anyhow, he had brought it up and we discussed. And then as, as he asked me, would, you know, trees be acceptable and things like that? But it was a visual barrier. It was not, it was not, not nothing as we see right there.
So you're requesting that there be a visual barrier? You're in agreement that you would like to have a visual barrier?
And they had moved it on to preliminary based on that.
Based on the understanding that there would be a visual barrier? Thank you. That's all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have the applicant address her two concerns.
I'd be glad to. The Planning Commission went through the Historic Resource Impact Study at length and went through the, all the impacts that were described relative to reducing the cartway width, reduce not having sidewalks, not having curves, not having a trail, all the things to reduce the impact on the Hughes property, the resources on the Hughes property. Mrs. Lesko said that there would be an impact on her property. And the comment in the Historic Resource, which is at 62 in their report, states that overall the subdivision should potentially constitute a low adverse impact on the Ellis Resources, mainly due to the construction of the cul-de-sac. So in talking with the Planning Commission, they said, what could you do? And I said, well, there's no room on her side of the property of the driveway, which is here. There's no room to plant in here where anything will survive. We said, we will consider planting here on this corner. None of this existed. Remember, we were here last week with Rachel, our landscape architect. She added these plantings since the Planning Commission to provide a visual barrier from the view of the Lesko property. We also agreed to make our construction entrance come in off of here to begin the
Where, where is your
Lower off of this lower end of Susquehanna. The construction was supposed to come in and will eventually, when the houses get constructed up there, there's nothing I can do about that. But we did agree that the tree removal and the basin construction would start at this lower end to pull it further away from Mrs. Lesko's property. So that was discussed at the Planning Commission. That's reflected on the plan. It's reflected in the recommendations. So that we think that we've addressed them as best that we can.
I just have two. Are you've done?
Yeah, I think so.
I have just two clarifying questions. So I'm looking at the historic impact statement. And it says that there's low, but that doesn't say that there's no impact.
Sure, of course, there's construction next to our house. I can't say there's no impact.
Okay, so there is some impact of a historic structure. Just to clarify, you said that there was no change to this plan from the Planning Commission, but then you indicated that there was a change in you creating those additional
You're correct. The additional landscaping is reflected on this version, yes. But there's not been a resubmission of the, of the plan set, no.
So, so there was an update to the plan. So when the Planning Commission was making, I guess, conversation or negotiating some kind of agreement between the two parties, they indicated that there, there could be a visual barrier or coming to try and come to an agreement that there could be a visual barrier. Did they explicitly indicate that it was going to be on Mr. Hughes's property as opposed to Mrs. Lesko's property?
What I discussed with the Planning Commission, that we have been in litigation with Mrs. Lesko for three years. So my client really doesn't have an appetite to go above and beyond for Mrs. Lesko relative to her impact on this property. Notwithstanding, we gratuitously said we would look at lot one and what we could plant there in an effort to find some sort of compromise.
So there are legal issues aside, I mean, the purpose of this is to ensure that everybody's being a good neighbor to everyone within lower winded township.
I think a six-lot subdivision instead of 12 is a very good neighbor.
And that's a personal decision that the Hughes's decided to make. That's not my question or concern. My concern is, is there an issue with making a visual barrier on her property?
I think what you see on this plan is the extent of the barrier that we're willing to provide.
So you do have an issue?
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
You do have an issue with creating a visual barrier?
What kind of visual barrier?
Shrubs, trees, bushes.
They are. I just pointed them out. That, this is the extent of the barrier that we are willing to provide. These plantings right here on lot one. That's it.
Chad, in reference to the point of three-way stop sign, can you address that, that intersection?
Can you show us where it would be on the map exactly?
Right here is, this is the existing Johns Lane, Susquehanna Road.
Right.
Will be tying in directly across from Johns Lane to create a new three-way intersection. At the Planning Commission meeting, it was requested that a always stop condition be evaluated for the newly created three-way intersection. As everybody is aware, in, in order to create an always stop condition or certain warrants that have to be met that are contained in the state vehicle code. We're getting close to wrapping up that evaluation. We just received some crash data from the Township Police Department that we're reviewing. That's one of the warrants that have to be evaluated. And we should have that wrapped up by the end of the month. And we'll be able to provide a recommendation in terms of the stop control for that intersection, whether it be an always stop condition or a combination of approaches being stop controlled. In addition to that, we'll recommend, whatever the ultimate stop configuration is, we'll provide a list of signs and pavement markings that must be added to the intersection as part of their land development plan.
With that recommendation, when it comes back, do the users have anything to say with reference to the township recommendation as it comes back? I mean, is it a township decision? Do we have to go to them? Why, if it's an intersection?
It, it's a township decision because Johns Lane, Susquehanna Road are public roadways. And again, it's all tied back to the warrants that are in the state vehicle code that have to be met in terms of the stop control that's in the intersection. So they'll
If those recommendations come back positive and you, and the recommendation is whatever it is, we could just go with it. We don't have to go to the users to ask them permission to do it, right?
No, we'll require it that it be, assuming the development goes forward and this third leg to the intersection is created, the, the new stop control configuration wouldn't go in until that third leg to the intersection is built. And again, we'll make it a requirement in order to comply with our review letter that they install the necessary signing and pavement markings in order to, to implement whatever condition we recommend.
With my past history of that road, and I'm the one responsible for that non-compliant sign, I can tell you that I feel for the people that live there because it is abuse and some type of regulation at that corner with, without a doubt, at least slow down the cut through. And I'm glad to hear that whatever our recommendations are, they are, and we would implement it.
Correct.
And I know I talked to the chief since the last meeting about the blowbys at Warren, is it chief? Is it? Kennelworth, I'm sorry. Kennelworth. And I, this is the first, I, I know that happens, but as for living on a development, Merrell Road for 20, 20, 70 years, there's a road there, Vista Road, that the same thing exists. And a stop sign went up. It was an illegal stop sign, but it went up. It really has no effect. They still blow by it. And we don't have enough police people who have the township to sit at these intersections. It's just unfortunate, but that's the way it is. Anyway, I'm glad to hear your answer for that intersection because something has to be done there and it would certainly slow down, you know, the cut throughs. Thank you.
Chad, can I ask you a quick question as well?
Sure.
Is there any realm of possibility that there could be a stop sign in front of Mrs. Lesko's? Lesko's house driveway?
A stop sign in front of her driveway?
At her driveway.
Well, that's where the three-way stopped with it.
Is it going to be directly in front of her driveways, I guess, my question?
Um.
Like, is there any requirements, I guess, within ordinance code statute, something that would prevent it from being directly, like a certain number of feet?
Yeah, there's nothing that would require it. I guess it would be a question of if we determine that traffic on Johns Lane coming from Bethlehem Pike. Sorry, thought I had that. Be a question of if this approach of Johns Lane has stop control, so it'd be the traffic coming from Bethlehem Pike approaching. If they have stop control, it would be a question of whether, is it best to sign it with just one stop sign on the right-hand side of the road, or would we want to put stop signs on both sides of the road? The typical application is just to put it on the right-hand side of the road, but we would review that with the staff and with the Chief Kenny to, to determine what the best signing is in terms of safety for the intersection. But we wouldn't do anything that would impede site distances from Mrs. Lesko's driveway in terms of entering and exiting her driveway. We certainly wouldn't do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I, I'm sorry, Chad. So the stop sign, I, I'm thinking about the traffic coming from, that-
From tennis?
Yes, from tennis. But you're talking about the traffic coming from Bethlehem this way. So is this going to be, are there going to be three stop signs? That's a three-way stop?
We don't, we haven't made that determination yet. The last question was in regards to whether any stop signs would be, need to be posted next to or adjacent to Mrs. Lesko's driveway. So that's what I was discussing in regards to traffic approaching on Johns Lane coming from Bethlehem Pike.
I would think you'd have to have a three-way stop sign to stop the people coming up from, like we're Tessie saying, from Susquehanna and up. You'd have to have a stop sign there, wouldn't you?
Depends on volumes, the crash history. This is a little bit of an unconventional intersection, in that typically on a three-way intersection, the trip, the street that's going across this way is the major street, and the third leg approaching is the minor street.
Well, I'll give you an opinion I have, and my time is running out on this board anyway, but I can tell you that if you don't put a stop sign on the, on the, the, the extension of Susquehanna at the top, then we're wasting our time. That's where the speakers come up and make that turn, and they don't even slow down. And I'm, I'm, what I'm saying is, knowing this township a little bit, there are a lot of illegal stop signs out there, that the state doesn't have the time to check all the townships in the municipality, nor in Lower Guinean. Put a stops, I'm saying, put a stop sign there no matter what your report comes up. That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
It's being recorded.
I don't care. I'm going to throw me out.
Are there any more questions from the audience? There's a hand in the back. Would you come up here on the podium, state your name and address, please?
Hi, good evening. I was here last meeting. My name is Loret Cuff, 332 Kennelworth Lane. Ironically, a few days after the meeting that we had, I was walking my dog down Johns, and the, one of the neighbors who lives on that same extension of Johns, who verified that the Hughes are very nice people, were walking their dog, and his son was skateboarding next to him. At 4:45, and the both of us were talking, and we were watching car after car, and then a truck came by speeding. The little boy was almost hit. Now, I remember you had mentioned last meeting about the young man who played on your son's baseball team, and he played on my son's baseball team too, and I think I know who you're speaking about. And if it's a young man in Lower Guinean who was on a skateboard, and the truck driver was under the influence, that was tragic. And I remember seeing the family walking around in the stores. They looked like zombies. That was horrible. I can unfortunately see the same thing happening. And I mentioned also the environment and the deer, and I also unfortunately live next to, that I'm going to call it the abandoned property. I know we can't do anything because that man pays his taxes. But I also know that the township had to come in, and I'm glad they did, and spend about $3,300 to reback that tall grass down. In terms of the stop signs at Kennelworth, they right now are, oh, you can't see them because of the trees. Now, one of, and I know you said the people didn't want speed bumps. I'm wondering if they can look at that as an issue again, possibly put a speed bump, what you're talking about, coming in off of Susquehanna into Johns. Maybe possibly making that stop sign or that sign that says no entry more prominent on both sides. I understand, and I, and I truly, truly like our police department. I feel safe here, and I want to continue to feel safe here, and I want the many, many more children that have been moving into this area specifically for our school district and our lower taxes on that street, as Ms. Morgan brought up. I want them to feel safe. I don't want to have another incident that happened to that young man. And as I was watching, zoom, speeding by, you know, and, and really now that it's getting darker early, and so many people walk their dogs, you know, and the only place, okay, so we're at Kennelworth, that's fine. But, and even when you're talking about coming in off Bethlehem Pike at night, turning into Johns, you can't even see those, you can't, you cannot, there's no stop sign there, but you can't even see the intersection. Now, I'm getting older, but you know, that's also, I mean, I, I don't even know if, because I often hear police siren, if they are, police sirens, if they're banging into the telephone poles, and then you have, of course, people turning into, from, from Bethlehem, and then they're going down Mar, not Morris, I'm, I'm blanking on the name of the street right, next to, oh.
Mount Pleasant.
Thank you, Mount Pleasant, as well as then we're going the other way to get into Johns, you're like, whoa, you know, you're like, almost like during the day or at night, you know? That's a problem, but getting back to what we're talking about, I think that the gentleman that I spoke to, he, he said, you know, you really kind of opened up my eyes to things. And when he saw how close his own son came to being hit, I think it kind of surprised him. Now, I'm not saying, don't go ahead with the development. I, I understand that, that you're right, and if I had it much invested, I mean, I, I understand, but I still think safety has to be considered because no matter whether it's adult, and many adults jog along there, or a child, a life is a life, and I don't think we can afford to lose that. Thank you.
Are there any more questions from the audience or online?
I'm sorry.
Is there, is there anybody online?
I don't see anyone.
Okay, thank you. So there is a motion in front of us for a preliminary and final subdivision approval for 776 Johns Lane. Can I have a, can I have a motion, please?
So move.
I have a second.
A second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
So we have three ayes and two opposed. The motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Next up, we have to change the agenda. I understand from talking with the Township Manager, we have a revenue change, it's an enhancement, and we need to add that to the agenda before we can vote on. So Craig, could you explain why we need to add this, please?
Yes, at first, I just want to ask for an amendment to the, the agenda for tonight to, as I'm asking for, to re-advertise the 2022 budget for a good reason. We're going to show a, a revenue increase of $601,725. This reflects the American Rescue Plan Act funds that will be, should be coming in July of 2022. This is a deferred revenue source in the accounting world, so we're not really supposed to show it in the budget, but it was requested to be shown in the budget. We're going to show it as a grant in the capital reserve fund. We have a separate account for this money that we, we had to set up according to the state, and we did. So nothing can be spent out of this other than those that are qualified under the ARPA grant. So asking for an addendum to the agenda to re-advertise the 2022 budget to reflect 700, no, $601,725 as a capital grant fund for the ARPA grant.
Do you need one of us to make the motion?
Yes, correct.
So I'm going to make a motion to amend the agenda to include the, the American Rescue Money Grant.
Seconded.
Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we've added it, and so now the agenda has changed, and so now, do you need a motion to add?
Now I need a motion to add the revenue line item for $601,725 to reflect the ARPA grant, the ARPA funds for 2022. In the budget, it is line item 30351970.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
How much is the total cost to re-advertise that, Craig?
Probably between $100 and $200.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
This will go out tomorrow. It is required to be re-advertized for 10 days, so we are still, if it goes out tomorrow, we're still in line for the December 13th date.
Thank you. Next up is citizens' comments. The citizens have left the venue here in person. Are there any comments online?
I do not see one.
Okay. Next up is the manager's report.
Just the offices are closed tomorrow, Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving, and with Hanukkah starting on Sunday, happy Thanksgiving and happy Hanukkah.
Well, that was, that was easy, okay. Next up is Mr. Brandt. Do you have any closing thoughts for tonight?
I just second what the, what Craig's comments were about the residents and the holidays coming up, and wish well to my fellow supervisors and the residents of Lower Guinean, that we have a safe, happy holiday coming up.
Thank you very much. Kath?
Couldn't have said it any better, Ed. Off third.
Tessie?
Yes, I wish all our residents a happy and safe Thanksgiving, and I would just like to reiterate that I'd like the, the township to start giving more of a consideration to the environment as we move forward. I, I can't emphasize enough how important that is to maintain the environment, environmental integrity of Lower Guinean, which is a big reason why people move here. And so I, I think that we'll, we'll have a, you know, a concerted effort going forward to try to really evaluate environmental impacts on new buildings and, and, you know, any major tree cutting and so forth. That's all.
Okay, thank you very much. I, I agree with you, it's a very important issue. Environmental stewardship is, is very important for our quality of life, you know? Hi, do you have any closing comments?
Just want to wish everyone happy Thanksgiving and all that celebrate, enjoy their Hanukkah.
Yes, well, I think it's all been said. Everybody wishes everybody a happy holiday. I concur. You know, let's make it so. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.
I'm sorry. Thank you.